Right.
We didn't follow process prescribed by PennDOT that would allow our traffic engineer to run PennDOT projects. Do you follow me on that?
Sort of, yeah.
Okay. So by following this process, they can now be designated to run the project. Whereas before they couldn't. This wasn't like a bid or anything at all like that.
Scott.
Obviously, they're capable.
Hanging in there.
Again, my concern had to do with.
They caught up. I have a plan to send you next couple of days. Chat Run Road. I think they asked me three lots there. There was one lot in the middle. Somebody's interested and they backed out because of the blood plane, but then one to the west.
It could be.
Big bikes.
You know, we don't have enough time for me to do it now, but I can explain. And we can get with sending and go over the who's in the ones. Are you, are you guys ready, Mr. LaFever? Are you ready?
Yes, the roadmaster, the road floods.
Mr. Weaver, are you ready?
Thanks.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. You will text your name and your address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we would ask that you unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we would ask that you would please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure that we've already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of the public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed towards the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item, and I would ask that you would join me by rising for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business this evening is a hearing for a zoning text amendment adding daycare, family, commercial to village residential zone ordinance 2022-15.
So the petition was submitted. The chairman explained what it was about. The hearing has been duly advertised. The petitioner is present along with the council, who I believe will be making a presentation this evening. After which the board can ask any questions, then the board can open it up to public for questions or comments. The hearing would be closed, and the board could take action this evening or postpone to a future meeting. So, Mr. Yoder.
Good evening, board members. Dwight Yoder from Gilbert-Crayton-Hess. Good to see you again. I'm here with Devan Pelt, who is the owner of Hemphill Family Child Development Center. She's been providing high-quality daycare services in the township for the last eighteen years. Unfortunately, her lease at her current location is not going to be renewed because the property owner needs that space for their, their own business. And so she's been having a bit of a mad dash to try and find a new location. She currently serves, how many families, Deb? About forty-five children. And as we all know, having high-quality childcare services is really critical. She has been able to find a location in the township, and that's obviously important because of a lot of her families are from the township. It's at the old Eastern Mennonite Missions location that, as you know, now is vacant. That has, I think, an old church building on it and an office area. So a portion of that site would be where Dad would want to move her childcare facility. And she contacted me to look at the zoning, and one of the things that I discovered in looking through the Township zoning ordinance was that the daycare centers were not allowed in the village residential district where this property is located, which is a little unusual because they are allowed in the low-density and medium-density residential districts. So I'm not quite sure why they're not there. But at the end of the day, in talking with township staff, it made sense to go ahead and put a petition in to change the text of the ordinance to allow those services within that district. This has been reviewed by both the County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission, both of whom recommended adoption. You know, I think there's just a lot of common sense here with this proposal. The village residential district typically, you know, Landisville, you want to have these kinds of services provided where people live and where there's also some businesses. Obviously, with Penn State Health coming in, you're going to have more folks coming into the township for work, and to have these kinds of services is going to be really important. I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I think it's, I mean, I do a lot of zoning and land use work, and this doesn't seem like one of those where the masses come out to protest. I, I might be surprised, but so I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I think it, it's consistent with what I think the township is trying to accomplish with its comp plan and with its zoning ordinance, and will allow these high-quality services to continue within the township. And I think the benefit is too, you're going to adaptively reuse a building and a property that has been used for commercial uses in a, in a really productive way. Deb, is there anything you wanted to add? You've been going to, you went to the Township Planning Commission? Anything else about what you do or any, anything else? You've been in the township for a number of years.
I hate to do this, but can we have her come up to the mic just for me?
I recognize some of you about, I don't know how many years ago we worked on the Dream Park together. Yeah, it's, that's been quite a while, but I've operated the childcare center for eighteen years, going on nineteen years. And it has evolved and grown, and so I look forward to being able to offer more services to more children. We're not looking at expanding and becoming really big because one of our, I think, one of our niche reasons people come to us is because we're sort of small and friendly, and everybody knows everybody. So it is a Reggio-inspired school, which probably means nothing to most of you, but it is sort of a unique kind of program, a little bit of Montessori, a little bit of Waldorf, very big emphasis on nature. So we're hoping to be able to have a certified outdoor classroom along with the space in the green space.
Any questions for either of us?
I have none, Ms. Where do you operate from now?
We're located in the lower level of the Sardina Donald Group Building on Main Street, just half a mile up the road.
Okay, and then a question for staff. There's a daycare that operates at Apostles. Does that fall outside the village zoning?
Yes, that's, I'm pretty sure that's not in village zone.
Okay.
I think that's.
Well, it couldn't be, right? Because it's.
Not because it's.
Non-compliant or?
Whatever home state is.
Okay, not that it really impacts anything going on here, but.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's not in the village.
Mr. LaFever, any questions?
Just a curious one. I'm not sure, is this what was once a train station?
So my understanding is the trolley station is, yeah, it's another, it's, I think it was all on the campus, but it's been sold to somebody else. This is the actual Mennonite meeting house. It was a church.
I'm generally familiar, but wasn't certain.
The trolley would be to the south, that little green sliver there is where the trolley building is.
Now I see.
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I just, I don't have a lot of questions, and I think it, it doesn't seem like a, any big deal, but so what age are they mostly?
We service children from six weeks to kindergarten. So we have infants, toddlers, and preschool.
Kids, well, do you need, I'm guessing it's all regulated by the state or is there like a certain amount of air, outside area that they would be outside or?
Yeah, the state regulation is sixty-five square feet per child when they're using that space. And then inside is forty.
And so you would, would that, what would be the upper limit of children that you could take there? Number-wise?
The state would probably license it for a lot more than we will take, only because of the type of programming we do. I'm anticipating possibly fifty is, not with the state would license that. They might license us for, I don't know, if, if they count the lower level, it might be sixty-five, something like that. We will probably have fifty.
I, I mean, I worked, helped work on the zoning ordinance. I don't know, I don't remember any discussion about why it was not included already, but I mean, it was a church, so they could have done something like that on their own, I would think. So I don't see any impact really. I mean, I don't see an adverse impact. So. That's all I got.
Okay, if there are no more questions from the board, we'll open it up to the audience in attendance. Is there any questions or comments from anyone here in attendance? If you could please come up to the microphone.
Where is this building? It's the address.
As shown on the map, it's at the corner of West Brant and Stony Battery Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from Zoom?
No, Zoom is all staff and LNP.
Okay. Hearing none. We will close this hearing. Okay. And it's my understanding that we can take action on this now, which I would prefer to do if we can, if that's all right with the rest of the board. Is there a motion to approve adding daycare services, commercial, and family as permitted use in the village residential zone, and amending the use regulations for daycare services, commercial, and family? A motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have the, I believe, a hearing for chief fire official duties and responsibilities ordinance is twenty twenty-two dash sixteen.
So this ordinance amends our Code of Ordinance, Chapter twenty. It creates duties and responsibilities for the chief fire official. The ordinance was duly advertised. Just to give you a little background, the chief fire official was hired in March of two thousand and twenty-one for the purpose of coordinating and overseeing fire and service, rescue services for Hemphill Area Fire Service Commission. This ordinance, as before you tonight, expands those duties to be, by designating him the chief officer of the two fire companies in East Hemphill. He will be able to designate territories, assume command of any incidents, enforce all laws, ordinances, and regulations related to fire investigations, and the ability to declare a property uninhabitable for safety reasons. The ordinance was fully endorsed by each of the departments. They are fully aware of what is happening, and the individual fire company officers will retain their respective authority and duties within their departments. Pretty much it.
Any comments or, or questions from the board?
The, the only comment that I would make is that in addition to it expanding the role of chief fire official, it also empowers the chief fire official in a way that he hasn't been empowered to act with and coordinate with the fire stations. And I think this is long overdue, and, you know, it's, it's a very good thing for fire service in our township.
So obviously, this would just, it's written up here is that it's just the, the fire companies in East Hemphill, not East Petersburg, so. Makes sense. I mean, we can't do that for them. Have to do it on their own if they so choose.
And it is before them possibly getting adopted in November, same similar ordinance for their fire company.
Any other questions or comments from our board? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. Then we will close the hearing. Again, I'd like to take action on that if that's okay with the rest of the board. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen establishing duties and responsibilities of the chief fire official? Okay. We'll say motion by Mr. LaFever, second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next is our consent agenda. This is a list of routine items that require very little discussion or debate. Is there any comments or concerns in reference to the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, action items. We have Lancaster Plumbing and Heating, eleven eighty-four Enterprise Road. Waiver and modifications.
Mr. Ember.
Good evening. Kevin Ember from R2, we're the site engineer for the project. Also here tonight is Larry Prescott from Professional Design and Construction, who's the architect and contractor. So just a brief overview, I think most of you were here when we came to discuss the sketch plan a couple of months ago, and the waiver of preliminary plan. The project's at eleven eighty-four Enterprise Road and involves a minor expansion of the existing Lancaster Plumbing and Heating business of about twenty-six hundred square foot building expansion and associated parking expansion that would occur at the rear of their property. The existing property is about one acre and is within the enterprise zoning district. At this point, we have resolved of that, any outstanding technical comments from the David Miller Associates review letter. The latest letter is dated October sixth. The, the main issues we have left are just finalizing agreements and establishing the financial security, which an amount has been recommended for that by the township engineer as well. So if you'd like, we can go over the plan in more detail, entertaining questions, or there's a couple of deferrals and modifications we were also requesting. If you'd like to go over those in detail, we could do that, too.
Could you briefly go through the waivers and modifications?
So there's two deferrals related to improvements along the frontage. First one would be providing sidewalks along the frontage of the property. We're requesting that just because there's not existing sidewalks to connect to on either side. It's in the enterprise zoning district, and there, there's no other existing sidewalks on Enterprise Road. There's also not known to be a lot of pedestrian traffic there. And associated with that is to install curbing along the frontage. We're requesting a deferral of that, just being that it's a relatively minor project. And again, there's no existing curbing there. We don't foresee any drainage issues, anything like that, and there's an existing driveway that, that's serving the facility already that would remain in place for this expansion. The two modifications were related to some of the landscaping requirements. So the first one was some alternatives to the, the standard buffer planting. As I mentioned, this is in enterprise zoning district, so all the surrounding properties are similar type of industrial or commercial uses. And as you can see, the, we're dealing with kind of a, a long, narrow lot, and the existing building does encroach into the, the side yard setback a bit, and so does the existing parking. So we're trying to provide the landscaping at the rear to buffer there where, where there is not existing building or parking. We would be respecting that landscape buffer area there, and then along the is the southwest corner, we're providing minimal buffering. You can also see in that plan, and I don't know if you can go to the landscape plan, Cindy, might help. There's some limiting buffering already on the adjacent property that's represented there. And then on the northeast corner, we're, we're providing some buffering. There's also an existing stormwater easement and swale that is somewhat centered on that eastern property boundary. So we're trying to keep landscaping out of there and provide where we can additional shubs and trees. I mean, and then also related to the landscaping was a request to that there would be one planting island technically required within that row of parking along the eastern boundary. And just due to the nature of this business, being a contractor's business, they have company vehicles, employee vehicles, so that we're trying to maximize the number of vehicles they could park on site. So to supplement that, we've provided two trees where there is some spacing at the northeast corner there. It would just be outside of a, a planting island within the parking lot.
Any questions or comments from the board on this? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? I hate to ask you to do this, but can you come up for the meeting minutes? I need you to come up to the microphone.
That's where the Toyota Service Center is, if you might. It's a little bit down the road. Yeah, it's. Near their service center.
Yeah, okay. Oh, down there further. Yeah, okay. Like you turn at the Burger King there, that's the, yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to recommend approval of modifications requests two and three? Condition on approval of one and four, subject to all staff and engineering comments. A motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. For the final land development plan, is there a motion to recommend approval of the final land development plan for Lancaster Plumbing and Heating Township file twenty-two dash ten dash O two, subject to all staff and engineering comments? Motion by Mr. LaFever is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries four to zero. It's always see, good to see businesses expand in East Hemphill, so thank you. Appreciate your work, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Act fifty-seven, resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, a resolution that directs the tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes under certain circumstances, which would include interest penalty or charge accruing in excess to the face amount of the real estate tax when a tax bill is not received. And Mrs. Schweitzer, could you give us some more background on this?
So this was adopted by the state legislature, Act fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-two, and it requires municipalities to adopt a resolution or an ordinance that basically follows those guidelines. It essentially is a allows new homeowners, usually, if they miss the cutoff of the mailing of the real estate taxes, they don't get a bill, they incur a penalty, then they could get that penalty back if they prove when they purchased the property and certify that they didn't get the tax bill. Pretty straightforward. Little bit of a niche, kind of.
Happen on very often?
No, I wouldn't imagine it would.
Parliament always includes proration of taxes, to my experience.
It, it does, but if, if the property is sold and new bills went out, but they still have the old owners, the new owners may not get the bill. It's a very.
Seems fair enough.
Odd.
It must be rare.
Small, yes.
Any questions from the audience on this? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, a resolution that implements Act fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-two, dealing with the waiver of additional charges for real estate tax in certain situations? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Up next, certified public accounting firm authorization to advertise intent to use a certified public accounting firm rather than elected auditors for the annual audit.
So this has been done for the, since I've been here, and it's been over sixteen years, fifteen years. We do have a slate of elected auditors. Mr. Rup is one of them. But we don't use them for the audit. Our audit is very intense and complicated, and we have always hired a certified public accounting firm. The township code says that you need to notify the residents that you're going to be doing this. So that is what the, the the advertisement is asking for. It's the intent of the board to appoint a certified public accounting firm to do the twenty-two through twenty-four audits.
Any comments or questions from the board on this?
As a former elected auditor, just a couple of questions. We'll continue to have auditors elected?
Yes.
Each year?
That won't change.
They'll have no responsibility then, really?
They set the, not really.
Okay.
They meet once a year and set the pay rate for the, if there was a working supervisor.
Okay. Thank you.
We're just making it official what we're already doing. Right.
Well, we're, we're, the last one we adopted covered the years nineteen to twenty-one. And then we, we also have a quote from our current CPA firm. But we're not doing that yet. First, we have to tell the residents that we're doing this. But we're not doing that yet. First, we have to tell the residents that we're doing this.
Right, so we're following procedure. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Why do we have elected auditors if they don't do anything?
Some of the rural municipalities upstate are that small that they still use elected auditors. But that's the only way those people out, I'm sorry, what those those municipalities do have working supervisors. So working supervisors can't set their own pay rate. So that's that's really the function and and why the elected orders haven't gone away.
This applies to everyone then because a couple people need it.
Yes.
And it applies to us too.
In terms of having elected orders, yes.
I think some people, from what I hear, they think that the elected auditor do it, and I say they aren't. So is this the, the public hasn't been informed of this in the past? Is that what you're saying?
No, the public has been informed. We typically do it every three years when we get a quote from our CPA.
How do you inform the public?
It's an advertisement in the newspaper.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to authorize advertising? The township's intent to use a certified public accounting firm rather than elected auditors to perform the annual audits for two thousand twenty-two. To two thousand twenty-four. Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second? Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Traffic engineer group recommendation.
So the process of selecting a traffic engineer started in June. Just explain the purpose of a qualified traffic engineer. Is its election process under PennDOT's credit. Criteria, which allows the firm to provide professional service to the township on federal and state funded projects. While the policies and procedures are much more stringent. The board adopted a resolution on June twenty, in June twenty twenty-two that established the policies. And procedures per selection of a consultant, which was including the minimum requirements for the selection committee. And that selection committee was designated as two supervisors, the township manager and the planner. With the assistance of PennDOT consultants, the ad was placed, created and placed. Which included submission requirements, scoring criteria and review process. It was approved by PennDOT and published on the PennDOT's Engineering and Construction Management System in August. The scoring criteria was three, fourfold. Prior experience as a municipal engineer and the understanding of local government was thirty percent of the score. Professional qualification, specialized experience and technical competence, the type of work that may be required was another thirty percent. The firm's capacity or availability of technical staff to accomplish the work, another thirty percent. And the final ten percent was the knowledge of the township and the county. Three firms did submit statements of interest at the end of August. Barry Isit and Associates with the project manager Ryan Kern, he's a principal engineer through his Mechanicsburg office. McMahon Associates, project engineer manager Christopher Bauer, he's a professional traffic. God, help me out. Operations engineer at the Camp Hill office. And then Wallace Montgomery and Associates, the project engineer Wayne Martin, also a principal engineer through the Mechanicsburg office. The selection committee met to review and discuss the three submissions. And determined that all three met the basic criteria as outlined by the PennDOT and Township. Interviews were scheduled and helped with all three. After the interviews, the committee submitted their analysis and scoring on prepared forms. This information was compiled with notes for presentation to the board of supervisors. Selection committee was ranking, has ranked the three firms as follows. McMahon Associates, number one, Montgomery Wallace, number two, Barry Isit, number three. The next step in the process. Is to the board to accept those rankings and then it gets submitted back to PennDOT for review. If PennDOT approves, they would let us know that. At that point, we can then officially appoint a traffic engineer and negotiate wage. And creating an agreement with him, with them. So you have a copy of the rubics that was prepared and completed. The, you'll see that most of the scores are very similar in nature. Really, the deciding factor, because they were all very qualified, very capable. The deciding factor really was probably the township, knowledge of the township and the county.
My understanding of this is that. We've, you've always had a town traffic engineer. But by following PennDOT's procedure, it streamlines the process for the state and federal projects. Would be correct that if we did not do that process, that PennDOT might possibly pick. Their own engineer to work on our behalf.
In terms of inspections, yes.
It's in our best interest to go through this process so that we are the ones choosing the engineer that we prefer to have. That we prefer to work with.
We had gone through this process, process in the past since I've been here. And at that point in time, it was Montgomery Taylor. And they are now finishing up their last project, which which is the Old Worsted Town Road Bridge. That's under construction.
This is a five-year time period, and then we would go through it again in five years?
Well, I appreciate the work of the committee, a very comprehensive report. And so I'm looking forward to it working well for the township.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the Traffic Review Committee listing? McMahon Associates as number one, Wallace Montgomery Associates, number two, and Barry Isit and Associates, number three. Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Hearing none, Traffic Commission report. Traffic Commission. Again, discussed. The, or actually discussed Brant Boulevard, putting up no parking signs at Brant Boulevard and G Street. We also discussed traffic studies on various roadways. In addition, we talked about the Spring Valley Road. Complaint of speeding and how to proceed on that. We're looking at. Getting pricing on speed limit signs that also. Tell the traveler how fast they're going. To install on Spring Valley Road and possibly record speed data as well, depending on the price difference. In addition, we discussed Alleyway in Worsted Town. This was the second meeting in which we discussed an issue of. Traffic traveling in the wrong direction. And we heard some new complaints for speeding and sight distance as well. So that concludes the traffic report. Up next, we have public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to make public comment about a non-agenda item? Hearing none, managers' report.
So I need to update you on the Central Road project. With the budget process, we're kind of fine tuning those numbers as best we can. We still don't have an award yet from the state, but the number that is expected from the township is, has risen to three point eight million. We've added the inspection costs on there, which is over four hundred thousand on that that share. So still continue to fine tune that, but at this point, we're at three point eight. Church Street Waterline, we talked about, was at the Traffic Commission, but it's been delayed at least a week. We're not real confident on what that date might be from the contractor, but we'll keep you apprised as soon as we get confirmation. Church Street paving is a twenty twenty-four project that's separate from the waterline connection. The waterline connection replacement is being done by Hempstead Water. The resurfacing will be a PennDOT project, and that's a twenty twenty-four project. Old Worsted Town Road Bridge, as I noted, was, is under construction. Diane and I are both working. Diane's working with the. Homeowner or the property owners, and I'm working through the the construction. Mambo jumbo is what I want to say, but yeah. Stony Battery Road, East Temple and West Temple crews worked together to do some minimal widening on the shoulders of that roadway. That's been done and will sit now until next year in spring when we'll resurface it. The Farmingdale Road project, we have approximately two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. To expand the scope of that work, to maximize the use of the grants. That could be resurfacing Orville. It's probably not enough to do Punch Out Bennett. It's probably enough to do the Spring Valley Road signal. But it all hinges on what PennDOT is willing to expand that scope for us, so we'll we'll continue to explore that. And Chief's, Ruth Baker's report, she received the traffic grant, so we're not just getting roadwork, we're also getting grants and. For traffic impact. Click it and ticket initiatives. These funds are used to offset the overtime that's incurred as the officers are out and about doing that work. I don't know if you noticed it tonight on the way in, but the campus fence is halfway there. The decorative fence is up. The chain link will be about two more weeks, and we'll have that chain link in the back of the buildings, the back of the property. The auditing firm you talked about already, I do need to tell you that we did hire an accounting clerk. She's starting November fifteenth. This is a part of the process of moving. Gina Johnson to the position of director and then fulfilling her position, which is now the accounting clerk. But I'm now also seeking a human resource administrator. That resignation was turned down in this week, so back at it again. Reminder, the budget meeting is Tuesday at four thirty, eight twenty, or ten twenty-five. And that's pretty much all I've got. And that's just questions.
For me, any other comments or questions from the board on the manager's report?
On the extra money that we'll have left over, the grant money. I for one would be in favor of us taking a look at punching out Bennett, even if we'd have to add, add some funding for it. I think that. Township's finances for this year, we're going to finish up pretty well and. I think that would be one way to alleviate some of the, the traffic out there. So, you know, just speaking for myself, I'd be in favor of. Taking a look at that, maybe traffic.
I'm sorry, I'm at a total loss.
Bennett, there were. Urban Air, where the Wolf Building was.
Bennett is where Faulkner is. And punching it out through to Good.
Do we own that property?
No, we own on Good, but we don't own, there's a section we would have to purchase, purchase the right of way. Which could delay, it may not fit into the scope of this, of the Farmingdale project. But I do have the engineer looking at some numbers to see what that's going to cost.
Orville lines up with Orville.
Yes.
But Good. The street past the furniture store, the Wolf, the Bennett. Bennett does not, so it would require another intersection on Good Drive within. Close to five hundred feet. Yeah, that's not going to work. That's not good in there.
You probably wouldn't get a controlled intersection. You wouldn't get a controlled intersection. Traffic signal. They'd be too close.
Okay, maybe it's something we can take, do some homework and take a look at that.
The engineer has, has the list of possibilities to look at and see what fits best.
Help the cross traffic. The new signal.
Yes, it will. It would allow gaps. We're also looking at maybe Farmingdale Road because that needs to be resurfaced, but then we also need to do stormwater work, so. They're all kind of factored in. But we don't want to leave grant money on the table, so we'll get on that.
Understood. Okay, anything else? Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-two PM. Thank you.